Yes, I'm just gonna give AJ an air horn and then when it's six o'clock he can just.
There he goes.
And it is six o'clock by the way. Let's get the meeting started.
Oh, do it again.
Yeah, I put it back here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Foraker.
Present.
Ms. Edler.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer.
Present.
Mr. Campbell is absent. Mr. Fordice.
Present.
On to number four, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Uh, on to number five, administer oath of office to council member Angela Schaefer.
Yes, I will not be here now.
Correct.
Yes. Yeah, that's my fancy name.
Uh, place your right hand on the gavel. Yes. Alright, I'll read this off and just repeat after me.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Angela Schaefer.
Thank you, yes. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties as Elkhart City Council member.
Discharge all duties as Elkhart City Council member.
For the city of Elkhart, Iowa.
For the city of Elkhart, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law. Thank you.
I'll have you sign this meeting. I'll keep it over here. Yours is next month.
Yeah, I screwed it up, sorry.
We practiced, so now you know. Alrighty, uh, on to number six, citizen hearing and other communications. Polk County Sheriff, I saw them hanging out over there. Police stuff, so as always, counsel, we will double back if, uh, Gregor or whomever shows up. Uh, on to letter B, Scott Dreher, Fire Chief. Hi.
Good evening.
Long time no see.
Uh, we had a busy month, twenty-two, twenty-two calls for service since the last meeting. Six of them were fire, twelve EMS calls, one hazmat, and three rescue assignments. Um, you'll have us on the bills to be paid. Got one for nine hundred and some dollars. I forget who sent them out. That was a repair to the brush truck. Uh, the charge air cooler. After the air leaves the turbo before it goes in and makes all the magic happen in the engine, it blew the end of it out. Which rendered that truck, um, just a glorified rolling.
Paperweight.
Paperweight. We continued to use it for about a week, um, just because we were in the heart of what I felt was prime fall fire weather, so we just nursed it along. And then when we got a rain event, took it down, had it repaired. There's another building there for Arnold Motor Supply. Um, I got oil, air, fuel.
Excuse me.
Oil, air, fuel, filters, and oil, and I serviced the machine up.
Awesome.
Um, so it was ready for, uh, all for another year worth of service. Um, Santa will be at the fire station on December twentieth at two o'clock. It's a little bit early, but I guess it'll be here before we know it. Um, in the next few months, um, I'm gonna have Field Fire come down and measure. Got to find four people that attend calls regularly. And want to purchase four new sets of gear for those folks. Despite my opposition to the fact that bunker gear quote-unquote expires, it does. It has a ten years of service life, and we are over that ten year service life. So, I'm gonna find four of the folks that are the most active. And start replacing some gear on a, on a cyclical basis, so we're not taxed with having to buy a whole bunch of sets at one time. The other issue that I run into is we recycle gear. So, if, uh, you know, if somebody came that wore the gear that was Mr. Fordice's size, and then somebody Johnny's size joins, we have to stuff them in it. And we do the best we can to make coats, pants, boots match, but as you can imagine, more than two people are created the same. When you buy gear, they actually come to you, measure you, and they make it custom fit. So this would be a good opportunity for some of our folks that are quite literally squeezed into gear to get something that properly fits them.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, I mean, the money's in the budget. I got it built in, so there's not asking for any money. It's already built into the fire budget, but it'll probably be in the neighborhood of twelve to thirteen thousand dollars for four sets, is what I'm anticipating. When I get a hard number, then I'll come to the council and ask for approval, but to get them to come down and measure. And the last I knew, we were several months, potentially many months out before we would even get that, uh, gear delivered to us. Backlog, just like everything else, trying to get it is, is slow. Uh, this last weekend, we did a prescribed CRP burn north of town. We, we, um, appreciate the opportunities to do that. It's not quite as exhilarating as practice burning a house. But it allows us to get out in the country, utilize, um, brush truck tanker, do some, do some live burning in, in wildland setting. And when you start burning acres full of grass that's five to six feet tall, things can get pretty hot and heated in a pretty quick order. And this one, um, it was good practice for us because we had some fence lines with some neighboring properties that we had to stop it at. Um, some exposures of the property owner that they just did not want to have burnt up. So we did that, um, actually this past Thursday night for our training. And last but not least, um, I staged this out, uh, over a period of time. We brought a, a brush guard for the, for the brush truck. A year ago, close to a year ago. Now, I'm going to be in the market for, and again, it's in the budget already, but in the market for a winch to put on, a fifteen thousand pound winch. That was always the plan. That way, in the event that that truck is off-road, and it does go off-road, that's what it is designed for. It gets itself hung up, or one of our neighboring partners gets hung up. Um, we can rescue each other without having to call the illustrious Ron Adams in the middle of the night to come drag our rear ends out of whatever predicament we got into. He's been great at coming out at the drop of a hat, but sometimes you find yourself just needing the truck and not having it planted in a mud hole. So, might be an extra tool that we can utilize. We have a recovery strap, but, um, as a guy in the safety world, they're not, uh, they're not terribly safe. And it takes a pretty good horse to be able to pull them out. And when you're out in the middle of wildland like Chalkwood down at the bottom, the Arrington Marsh down here, the availability of tractors can be somewhat hard to come by, so. Those expenditures will be coming in the near future. Again, both are in the budget, not that I'm asking for money, but they will be coming. So all I got for this month.
Counsel, any questions? I did have a couple of people on. Uh, the, I know that's Ankeny now, but the house burn that happened, uh, down here on one hundred and twenty-sixth, uh, weeks ago now, call it. Is that, I, I know they probably didn't reach out. Is that something that you guys have an opportunity, if that's, you catch wind of that, that you can participate in? Is that a touchy subject? Is that a, okay?
We do with our neighboring partners, um.
And good tailing off of, you had mentioned it's not quite like a house burn, uh, with your, with a controlled burn you did.
It, um. It becomes an issue with some of our neighboring partners in their career.
Okay.
Because they feel there's liability. They like to save it for their own people to be able to practice it, much like if we have one, you know, we want to make sure it's our people. The, um, those opportunities are getting fewer and fewer.
Sure.
Between, and the state makes it extremely difficult and expensive actually to, to pull one off.
Okay.
The homeowner is responsible for testing, doing an asbestos remediation on that home, and if there's any asbestos found, they have to pay to remediate it. Sometimes, um, it's three to five thousand dollars just to get the, just to get the testing done, get the proper permitting. So if you have an old junk house, you know, you could just take a track hoe, pick it up, put it in the dumpster, haul it to the, haul it to the metro waste, and you're done with it. So put an extra expense into it. Sometimes it's difficult or cost prohibitive, because you still have to clean up at the end. We as fire departments are only allowed to burn two with asphalt shingles in a year's time, and they can't be within a half mile of each other.
Okay.
So, there are rules for that. However, the biggest hurdle is just having availability, and then Ankeny, by the time they ran all of their people through it, that's an incredible amount of people alone. If we have one and all fifteen of our people show up, that's only one shift at Ankeny. Let alone the other four shifts that are there. So there's a lot of people.
That's fair.
Um, but coming up in, uh, I lose the date. I think it's December seventh. It's the first week or so of December. Uh, we have an invitation. We go up, we're gonna go up to Maxwell. They have the Iowa Fire Service Training Bureau Burn Trailer. It's not quite the same as an actual structure, but we take turns. Um, Cambridge sometimes has things. Some of us smaller departments, um, will house trainings, then we'll invite other people in. A few weeks ago, we hosted one here for some firefighter one folks. Ropes, ladders, things like that. We're gonna go up there for the burn trailer. We'll do several round simulations of burn inside of a trailer, so. We do, when we get invitations, and we extend those invitations the same, um, when we have those opportunities, but it's, it's getting rarer if you are part of the team to have that.
I, I figured there was a lot more to it and, and politics and all that fun stuff or what, and I just, I saw it and I was like, I'll ask him next time I see him, so. Just more curiosity than anything, so. Awesome. That's, that's all I had, so.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, sir. Alrighty, on to letter C, uh, public comments. Anything not on the agenda? Any public comments this evening? Anyone? Anyone at all? Yes, Mr. Hess.
I pause. Tell me, I'll guard it.
I appreciate you, sir.
I appreciate you, Mr. Man. So, um, but I'm gonna get on your back a little bit tonight.
Okay.
So, when you first, uh, assumed your office, you had set up whatever, wherever the table was oriented, and you had a pledge for transparency. Within the government. And one of the things that was going on at the time, you were told there was an audit that was being performed, uh, on the city. And, uh, that, when that audit was issued, there'd be discussion as to the findings on that. And recent events this month reminded me of that, so I went out and took a look at that twenty-twenty-four, um, audit report. But it's actually a re-audit report, and there's a difference between an audit and a re-audit. A re-audit is a little bit more focused, and, uh, the reason why I broke my iPad is I wanted to make sure I stated this correctly, so I'm going to read directly from the report. But on the bottom of page four of the report, it, it says, "The procedures described above do not constitute an audit of financial statements conducted in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards." "Have we performed additional procedures, or have we performed an audit of the city? Additional matters might have come to our attention that would have been reported to you."
Okay.
So, when we keep saying we had an audit done by the state, that's actually technically a misstatement. We had this re-audit that was done. Um, you know, it, it did have some findings in it, um, and for the most part, it says, you know, it sounds like they had some procedural recommendations that the city adopted and spoke to. But the one thing that I saw within that report that I'd never heard any discussion about on council was there was an uncollected five thousand eight hundred and seven dollar and fifty cent, um, item under building permits that were issued, but the, but the fees were never collected upon. I'm just curious, were those fees ever collected? And, you know, was there, you know, who racked up those unpaid fees? You know, was this, you know, was there a predominant, um, repeat offender, so to speak, with that, and has that been addressed? Or is that's not occurring anymore? So, so there are a few other things, you know, that were spoken to. Some involved past employees, and that was addressed, and, and for smaller amounts, but never heard anything on that, so. Again, referencing recent events, and I know you've got a closed session at the end of the meeting today, um, you know, I think the city needs to request a full audit.
Yeah, and I'm, and, and I'll, I'll stop you there, not, not to be rude, but I know we're coming up on the time as well. Uh, that's something that we, I know we have discussed. I can't remember if it's been displayed publicly, or if it's been, uh, you know, maybe emails, whatever. As far as budgeting for scheduling audits to make sure that we are on track and there's no surprises, if you will. I'm, I'm gonna call them surprises. Um, the, I don't know when we have one, or when we had budgeted, I think you and I were speaking about this a couple days ago, Brad. Uh, then we have one budgeted for, uh, was it twenty-seven? I think you're looking at doing one, hopefully maybe sooner than that. Um, but I know that's when we were planning on it, to, and then get them on a regularly recurring basis, just to make sure that everything is checking out, everything's on the up and up.
But if that's the same outfit from Atlantic that did the last audit here, again, that's not a financial audit. That's a procedural overview.
I'm not saying that it would be. I'm just saying as far as having an audit done in general, so.
Okay, so, again, I, I think a full audit would be warranted, given the recent circumstances.
Don't disagree with you, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
So, but, you know, to be honest with you, Katie, if I were you, I'd be just mad if this audit would be.
Yeah, I don't believe, yep.
So, um, because, you know, council's going to have to perform enhanced oversight.
Uh-huh.
Because of your fiduciary responsibilities, you know, you know, it says city government, but if you read the charter, you know, you're an incorporated entity, so you're a corporation. You guys are the board of directors.
Uh-huh.
You know, to, to put it in private tense, your private sector, sort of test, I'm sorry, where am I?
You're, you're, I'm right up against it, so. I didn't, I didn't start the timer, but I know you're, you're coming up against it, so. So.
But.
I, I give you fifteen more seconds.
I think it's difficult for you to do that, and because there's always going to be, if you don't do it, there's always gonna be that little question, well, did she or didn't she? Did she or didn't she? And if you can't feel a hundred percent confident with her, you need to either let her go.
Sure.
Or do a thought.
I, I, I think we're pushing up against boundaries as far as what we should be and should not be discussing in an open forum for the, for the meeting, but I, I appreciate it. I, we're getting there, so. Were there any other public comments this evening? Okay, public comment session closed. Tony, if you've got anything else, as always, feel free to send it to me, send it to us, or whomever, so. Thank you, sir. Okay, on to number seven, uh, public hearing regarding code violation notice for property owner two fifty-two Northwest Main Streets. Mr. Adams, good evening.
Yes, it's me.
Yes.
Ron Adams. First question I have is when you send a notice out on it in there, you give everybody ten days for it, but if you don't get your mail every day, you miss out on a few days. Well, you're kind of behind the eight ball. In there, I think that needs to be addressed on it in there. Because, pick a date, give them X amount of time to get their mail. Some people only get their mail once a week. In there, I know where there's one that hasn't got any in four weeks, because they haven't been here.
Okay.
So, that's something in there. The other part of the question is, when did this ordinance go into effect? What year?
Do we have that?
I know it was prior to twenty-seventeen, but I don't have the exact year.
When you put an ordinance into effect in there, there is a grandfather clause in there, or does everyone have to be brought up to that date? Do you follow me? What I mean?
Yes.
I'm just curious, is there grandfathered in? Because we've been in that place since nineteen sixty-six, so you can change ordinance today, and then you gotta bring it out. Is that how that works?
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Fordice, if you'd like to.
No, the, the grandfathering in, so are you, are you speaking to your specific incident thing? Because that's what we're here to discuss.
There are several other things here that, but if that was back to seventeen, the city don't have their stuff brought up to code either.
Well, there wasn't code enforcement in twenty-seventeen, first off, but to speak to your specific issue is what we're here to do. As far as automatically grandfathering or requiring people to get up to code in the past when there was no code enforcement? No, nothing was done to require them to get up to code in twenty-seventeen.
You didn't need an officer to do it. It's code now.
Okay, I agree.
It's, it's. Back when we went in, the business there, they didn't have any codes. In there. So you're saying that they put a code in today, you can start writing stuff on it the next day, and the city don't have to follow any of it?
I don't think I understand what you mean by the city doesn't have to.
Not tracking either.
Think pass along.
While we're all looking at the pictures, um, Mr. Adams, what would you like to see happen in your case?
Well.
What are you asking for from us?
We gotta have little in there, I don't know what you wanna call it, but some of your businesses into there. You've got business out here in the Astor area. They haven't done nothing. In there, and you've got other, not anything on the residence. I get it, pick it up and do stuff. Probably would have done something if they had not excluded someone, certain properties, and they did it just at the time because of who was in on the council. If they would have left the main street money and give it to some of them, the city administrator at the time come down personally the last time and filled the paperwork out and said, "You got it. You can do whatever with it, this and that and this," and then all of a sudden, "Oh, no. You repair cars, or you work on trucks. We're not doing that." So, I gotta dig money out to do it. Half of these people that put stuff in don't have the money to do it. You know, put a fence around, you're looking at ten grand. Put a fence around up there. You need a fence around the city shed up through there, because your stuff isn't any different than mine. You're probably looking at thirty, forty thousand dollars to do that. But you want a citizen to go ahead and make things better than what the city is? They put rock in over here. Supposed to be concrete.
I do know when we first brought this, as far as launch the code enforcement, a relaunch, if you will, I know we had Harrison go around to all of the city buildings first, um, as to why that was not on. I will agree with you. I don't understand why that's still in that state. Do you have dates when those photos were taken by chance?
Yesterday.
Okay. I would think we should, uh, let's follow up with Harrison as far as why that was not notated, as far as, and, and I'll, I'll show you the photos here in a second, but.
That's what I'm getting at.
To, to your point on that.
If you're trying to put it in and on assistance, and I know what you have, the ones the same way, but the city don't follow their own ordinance.
I, I will agree with you on that as far as the photos that you've got there, and I would like to see that addressed and, and cleaned up.
So if the city's gonna address theirs and do theirs, they need to do it before they start pushing anybody else to do theirs, is the way I feel about it.
I, I believe that to be a fair point. I do.
Because see, if you're gonna follow codes, you're gonna follow codes. You don't follow codes all the time. You miss a code every Wednesday.
How's that, sir?
You put your garbage can in the street, not on the curb, even your neighbors talk about it. Just give a little FYI.
Okay.
Since this is a public hearing, can the public comment?
I'll let Mr. Adams finish if he has anything further.
Nope, go ahead and have me.
Let's keep it short and sweet, though.
Are you saying I could be verbose?
Yeah.
So, Ron did bring up a good point, you know, um. This was an existing structure. You know, you put in this pencil events with sometime around two, twenty-seventeen, or, it ended carbon date, but probably as early as twenty-seventeen, or no later than twenty-seventeen. So, wasn't it shortly after that, and Joe, you were on PZ at the time, but wasn't where you lived technically zoned commercial?
Uh, well, not my house, the corner lot, um, which was Ad's house, which my grandpa owns now. But yes, that was commercial, and they at that time rezoned it to be residential.
I'd like to remind everybody in attendance that we are here to discuss Mr. Adams' specific violation. Whatever he brought up to us is, is, is welcome, but I, that is, that is what we are here to discuss.
Part of his violation is because it says that, because, because the commercial property is in view of residential area, is why this particular code is, you know, the city is claiming is actionable.
Yeah.
But, again, business been there since sixty-something.
Sixty-six.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, which the, the property you're approaching was zoned commercial, and then when it's changed, you know, you know. I, I, I think the question of, of grandfathering is important, and, you know. And I'm sorry, I'm gonna go off the rails on here, but, you know, you can't, this, well, even Des Moines recognizes that Sherman Hill is unique from south of Grand. I mean, the west side of town is different than the east side of town. You know, some people refer to this side of town as the shit side of town.
You know, slums. You mean, good council members have done that.
So, but, you know, so, you, I, I mean, to me, it makes perfect sense to have gravel in front of the water treatment plant, but by code, that should have been concrete. And I'm familiar with that wording because I wrote it.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel comments from you. We'll start down the line. Unless there's any other public comments.
I think, so, do you want to summarize what exactly you're asking for then here, or?
Asking to be grandfathered in. And to there in Leicester City, which if they got enough that you feel, see about getting some grants to help the businesses out. In there. Show a little appreciation for being in town, in there. We've been in town since nineteen fifty-nine. We've been in that east building since nineteen sixty-six. You have no idea the hours they put in helping different things around here. They have ceased.
Okay. Okay. Yep.
That's it. That, the question being, uh, bordering a residential property, correct? Referring to the property to the east?
Yes.
Okay. Property to the north, has that always been residential?
Yes.
Okay.
Just like where the city shed is. To the east, it's residential.
Nope, I'm not.
Um, I have a lot of feelings about code enforcement on the west side. I'm from the west side. Um, I've had code enforcement violations for myself and my family as well. Um, I have mixed feelings, though. I mean, I don't want it to be west side versus east side. I think that's ridiculous, but all the houses on the west side have been there much longer. Um, I've got mixed feelings about grandfathering in, and it, I think it's just on a case-by-case basis. Um, not everything should be grandfathered in, not everything should not be grandfathered in. Um, but I feel like regardless, I don't think we should just say we need to put up, you need to put up a fence, because some people can't afford a fence, can't afford to do that, and I feel like, you know, there could be common ground, maybe, um, if they do this, then we'll do this, or we'll meet in the middle, or we'll do whatever. I think that's what we should be doing. That's just my opinion, though. I don't know if that makes sense, but I'm trying.
I appreciated that you took the time to write the letter and do the public hearing, because I feel like the whole purpose of code enforcement, as we started to try to reignite it, was that we knew there were going to be things that would be murky gray areas, things that wouldn't make sense. We knew there would be missteps in the process, and unless we have conversations like this, we can't correct that. So I was really pleased to see your letter, um, and I felt like it was well worded, and yes, to your point, everybody doesn't need to build a fence. Now, I share the frustration of the mayor in that we specifically asked that all the city properties be investigated first. And I would have expected the things that you had in the picture to have been brought up to us, so that we could have figured out. And I would have expected the things that you had in the picture to have been brought up to us so that we could have figured out how we were gonna proceed with that. So frustrated about that. That's not your fault, obviously. Um.
But you understand where I'm coming.
Yeah, 100%.
You got it there.
Well, right. Yeah, I can't I can't tell you to take care of something in your backyard if my backyard has the same problem. That doesn't make any sense. That's dumb. Um, so no, so I appreciate that you you brought it up and it's a valid point and it's something that should have been addressed. Wouldn't have figured all this out had you not written your letter. So thank you for going ahead and going through the process so that we could have conversations. I think that's what's important. Um, I think moving forward, something we're going to find both with residents and with uh, commercial properties is the relationship and the dialogue and the conversation, because to Jill's point, I don't think blanketing anything ever makes any sense. So I don't wanna say we're gonna grandfather everything in. Um, but we're also not gonna say that we're not gonna grandfather things. I think people like you that go through the process deserve that time and attention and respect. And I would hope that other people, if they also come up against situations like this that don't make sense or that they think don't necessarily um, come across as fair, go through the same process, have that conversation with us so we can do what is right and what makes sense. Um, at this, are are we at a point where we're discussing what we're inclined to do?
The public hearing's still open yet?
Yeah. I mean, coming into this meeting based on your letter and my knowledge of the code and the intention behind code enforcement and respect for history and old buildings. Um, I was inclined to go ahead and and grant the grandfathering for you. Um, I don't think you intentionally, you know, keep a crap heap or anything. I don't think you're piling up garbage. Uh, everything that's there is there intentionally. Uh, we can certainly work with you to make sure if there's something. If we had a complaint from a resident that could see your property, then we can have that conversation. I don't think that complaint has happened. Um, so that's where I came at with this. I would like these dialogues going forward to to at least have. I don't want it to feel like an attack. Like, I felt like the the printed, I would have liked the pictures of head of time. So that I could have gotten more knowledge about why specifically that wasn't addressed. I don't like not knowing that answer. Uh, so I I would like in the future, uh, when these sort of things pop up, you know, give us the information we need ahead of time so that so we can feel like it's an informed decision and not a sneak.
I would have thought that the city already knew. That's why I brought it in the way it was. Because I figured that being council members, whoever had already drove past it and saw it.
Yeah.
And there to put fences around everything. I don't have a problem with the fences, don't get me wrong. But to me, every time they put a fence up, it's like building a concentration camp.
Well, sometimes fences don't make sense. Sometimes.
And you don't know, just because, this gets me. There's two or three places you've had put, they put fences in. But if you can put the camper in the backyard behind the fence, it's okay. You can still see the camper. I don't, I don't get that part.
Nope. That's.
And too there.
I I respect your common sense approach to things. I feel like we are in agreement in that I can't call you out on something in your backyard if I haven't taken care of mine. Uh, like I said, I came into this meeting inclined to 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 grandfather you in because I think your intentions are good. Uh, and I don't think you're trying to keep a junk pile in your backyard for everybody to see.
Everything there's for sale. I sold fire pits out of there, everything in that. And I go back there all the time, pick pieces up, take them in and use them.
Yeah. So that's where that's where I sat on this. Um, yeah, in the future, I'd just like, oh, give us a heads up so I can make sure we've got all the pieces in place, because I wanna go to bat for you, but it's harder for me to do that if I don't have all the pieces.
I understand. I'd appreciate that. And too there.
Oh, yeah. I am just a little concerned, though, about grandfathering people in. Because I'm not saying that you would ever take advantage of that, but there could be some people that do. And I don't want it to get to we grandfather you, grandfather you in, so then things keep just piling up. And I don't want that to happen.
Kicker is if it's how that works on a lot of that in there, and I'm sure Mr. Henderson can tell you, but how that works on a lot of that in there. If the property, if, for instance, you had stuff sitting around yours and property changed, went to one of the kids or whatever.
Like my grandpa's property that had the trailer.
Yes, that's different. That's a little bit different situation, but if it goes totally out of family, then everything's changed.
Like starts over.
And so if it get, if it continues similar to what happened over here to Lester's old place in there, he started dragging in more stuff all the time. I get it. I get it. I don't want that for the neighbors or anything, anyway. I don't wanna look at it. But when you got stuff collected over 60 years in there, come clean the house out, see what that's like.
Yeah, no, I I totally understand.
Mr. Fores?
Yeah, I'm good.
And I had gotten a look from that direction.
Um, I think I echo a lot of what Angie's saying in terms of knowing things ahead of time and encouraging you to continue to bring stuff to us. We do appreciate that. I mean, your listing of issues is helpful, but also know we can't fix everything all at once either, as they come up. Budgets, things of that nature. And I think part of the not I think, but one of the things we talked about when we spoke for over seven months about code enforcement restarting is that it was the start of a conversation. We we said that, I said that, we we've all said that multiple times, and that's what these are aimed to do, is start the conversation.
It would have been a great poster.
Yeah, fair enough. Um, and so we did offer some of the, oh my gosh, what was that money called? The federal COVID rescue.
I wanna say ARPA.
Yeah, the ARPA money to businesses for facade upgrades and cleaning up things of that nature. And the city did meet them halfway, so we matched, you know, if they would get X amount of ARPA, if they put an X amount in. Right. Well, money's used, it's gone. Um, but warnings were sent out for that, that it was leaving. We talked about it at a council meeting. So I know, I know there was money available at one point. Um, and in terms of, you know, when ordinances and things were written, one of the things we're working on, and it's with GOV, our new software, digitizing everything as well, so we can answer questions more quickly about when were ordinances before any of us were anywhere near city council put in place. We will, we'll have searchable records from that from now on, hopefully soon, as we continue to digitize those things. So trying to answer your question of when it was put in place, the question back to you would be, when were you aware of it then? You know, if it was put in in 2017, you tend to keep up with things like that. So have you known for eight plus years now that you're supposed to have a fence there because you've been violation of a code, or is that, you know what I mean?
No, because anytime before that, that I've checked with, with any my stuff, it just like households, everything else, you're just grandfathered in. If it changes or there is a problem in there, you bring more in, you do more stuff, whatever, then you have to. Like they had a problem with a guy one time with wood, so they told him he had to do something.
Okay.
And too there. And simple, just, I get it, don't get me wrong, but there's gotta be a little little leeway, too, because there's stuff around Firehouse, too.
Yeah.
Get a car that's set there for several months on city parking that don't get moved.
I think months is a generous term as well.
It it had been there for some time and I had requested it be moved.
Yeah, it was behind for a while, too. But but I understand. And, um, so I, one of the things I wanted to go try to figure out because what your request was, was to be grandfathered in and kind of learn more a little bit about how that actually works. And so when I, when I looked into it, it really talks about, um, new rules or requirements allowing them to continue operating under the previous standards if they were already in compliant in compliance or existence before the change took effect. So the reason why I was asking about when it was done or did you know about it is if that pile or the piles of things you use were there um, before the ordinance went into effect, then in theory, it wouldn't be grandfatherable because it would have needed to have been cleaned before that was put into effect by the definition of it. That's the way I understand that. I may be misunderstanding it, but that's how I read it, uh, from the legal definitions anyways. But that doesn't mean we can't work with you. I mean, part of this whole conversation is time. And the same thing. So you showed us the fence pictures tonight. You know, it would be a reasonable amount of time for allow a city to budget and get a fence put up, right? And it would be the same thing for you. No one's telling you, you have 10 days to put up a fence, or you're in trouble, or 20 days or 30 days or whatever. I know in previous cases, we gave somebody 18 months to put up a fence and the fence hasn't been put up, and that was four years ago, right? Because code enforcement dropped and council changed and things of that nature. So my question, I guess, back to you, since you were asking about our fences. If we put a fence up around the maintenance shed, and we put a fence around a different area hypothetically, that turns out we need one. And we paved this out here, which we've already talked about budgeting for 2027 to have it paved and going back to to V and K and looking at approvals and seeing why that was missed. If we did those things, and then you got this code violation again in 18 months, would you put up a fence then? Because we did? Is that kind of what you're saying? Because at some point, we're gonna put a fence up.
Probably gonna have to put a fence up anyway to keep people from stealing things.
Yeah. Well, and that was actually part of the question.
Because there's five-figure discounts.
Yeah.
You cannot imagine.
Yeah.
No, you cannot imagine.
Right. I'm not trying to. Yeah, sorry. If I was giving the impression I was, I'm not. I get it.
You can't leave what they try and pick up and carry off.
Yeah.
And it's funny in a way.
Right.
No, it's funny, because they think that.